However, we're gonna get the feedback.
Just raise your hand, Jeff, if you can hear us.
There we go.
Okay.
That's working on.
Can you hear us now, Jeff? Okay.
Yay.
Good.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. First item on our agenda is to hold a public hearing on the annual updates to the general assistance ordinance appendices. And pursuant to that, holding a public hearing this evening, October 12th, convening the public hearing and saying at 6:37 at Town Hall, 180 Main Street, to receive public comment on the annual updates to the general assistance ordinance appendices. A copy of the updates is available for viewing at Town Clerk's office. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? Okay. Any comment from the council? I have none. Okay. And Bob, or anything on that? Oh. Is there room?
Basically, I don't know.
Okay, so what we'll do is we will close the public hearing at 6:41 on the computer. So we have three councils present this evening. Mallory's out on vacation. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the following minutes, the Town Council of September 28th, 2021. I do have several edits on that. So what I'd like to do is go through those beforehand.
Yep.
Before we, yep. Yeah. And unfinished business. There's a couple of items where we're confused. I believe I added at the end of the town manager's report the request to schedule two special town council meetings on October 5th and 6th at 4:00 PM Town Council with one item agenda of those special meetings, which is to pursuant to one MRSA Section 405.6A Town Management Agreement. I believe that should be following the town manager's report. And then then the after the colon following licensing, I believe that section should say there is there is a calendar event related to the, to the topic. And that was advertising that October 5th, 2021, Town Council Planning Board Workshop with the Town Attorney President Beazum to review the municipal authority around caregiver licensing. So that that's really the only thing that belongs in the medical marijuana caregiver licensing. And then going over to new business, number one, the First Baptist Church. The word following, the second, second line, after conditions, comma, it should be appurtenances, appurtenances? A P P U R T E N A N C E S. And delete pertenses.
I'm sorry, is it checked? Did you repeat the spelling, correct spelling?
A P P U R T E N A N C E S.
Thank you. We had a doozy with that one. Try to re-listen to that.
Trust me, it was a doozy for me to say.
Yes, we remember. It was like, Barbara, come listen to this.
I just traveled with that.
Yeah. And then on the solar energy morgue atrium, the morgue atrium was adopted with emergency preamble effective 09-28, 2021. We should delete max the end of. That's all I have on that.
Chair, I move we accept the town meeting minutes from September 28th, 2021 with the corrections.
Second.
Because we have three councils present, all of our votes need to be unanimous in order to pass. Okay, all those in favor of approving the town council minutes of September 28th, 2021 with corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes 3-0. Town Council of October 5th, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the town council meeting minutes from October 5th, 2021 as written.
Second. In discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes 3-0. Town Council of October 6th, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the town council special meeting minutes from October 6th, 2021 as written.
Second.
In discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes 3-0. There's a note on the agenda that says the minutes for the public hearing and board of assesses for 9:28, not given. So we'll take that up perhaps on next meeting. Next item on the agenda is the treasures warrant in the amount of $1,187,395.89.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the treasures warrant due $1,187,395.89 dated 10/7/2021.
Can we amend that to in the sum of? You went with dated twice. I hate for someone to hear it and correct us.
Okay.
It's okay.
It said just, we just want to amend it to in the sum of.
So it's not amended.
Thank you. Second.
No worries.
We have a crowd.
In discussion?
I just wanted to note the school payments in there for a little over $700,000.
Ouch.
Yeah.
All those in favor of signing the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes 3-0. Public comment, attorney, any member of the public wishes to speak on any items that are on the agenda? That was time, yes, sir.
So we're a little nervous. We've never been to a council meeting before.
First thing you can do is just tell us your name and your address. That's usually what we do.
Yeah, my name is Adam Jacobs and this is my wife, Katie Jacobs.
Yeah.
And we have some family property over on the corner of
Old South Road and 236. It's a little tiny shop.
Used to be like a CD store. It's been a flower store, I think years and years ago, it was a little gas station. And I believe that the zoning was changed where we're not allowed to turn it into any kind of a retail or anything like that. So we really
You're not allowed to sell out of it anymore.
Here to find out if there's any way or what we would need to do to maybe ask to get it rezoned. We run a small business out of our house. We make like custom t-shirts and mugs and keychains and stuff like that. Most of, most if not all our business is online. But we're kind of about growing our home and we have access to this building. And it would be nice to have a place for people to come pick stuff up or come actually touch and feel the stuff that we make. So I guess that's really where we're at, so.
I came down and I talked to the code enforcement who said that if the zoning has been changed and you can't sell out of it anymore because it wasn't something for more than a year. Like you, I guess it's been more than a year since it's actually been open to the public. And then the woman, the secretary or the front desk woman told me to come to a town council meeting. And this is where we would start to see what we would have to do.
Do the code enforcement officer use any words like non-conforming use or any terms like that?
No.
He, not, no, not when I was there. He might, it's my grandfather's, like it's, it's his property and it's his shop. So he might have spoken to him. I don't know anything like that. What he was told, what I was told when I went and spoke to him was that because it hasn't been sold out of for more than a year, that that's why you can't anymore.
So if, if you go back to where the issue was, there was a shop and I don't remember if it was the CD shop as the final or flowers. That
It was the dragonfly woman.
Okay. So that So
Which I think was about three years ago.
Right, so that, that business, that business went out and then the mobile food vending barbecue place came in.
And they couldn't do food inside.
By the way, but couldn't be there because that other business had gone out for over a year.
Yes.
Because that was non-conformal.
Okay.
So that means they'd have to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they'd have to go back to the planning board.
No.
Code officer? Code officer to start there, the owner of the property.
Right. Right, so what, basically what it is, if it's my understanding, the code enforcement officer is the one person in town who's authorized to interpret and enforce the ordinances.
Okay.
We don't do that.
Okay.
So this is kind of a friendly, you know, and so we're not, I don't want to step on the code enforcement
Absolutely, yeah.
or anything like that.
Yeah.
But that's our understanding of what the status is at this point in time.
Okay.
So that would be the, you're really your only recourse at this time unless the
So he has final say, no matter what, over who can and
It's on the books right now, yeah.
Okay, alright. I mean, that's it, I mean, at least we know more now because we really had no idea and nobody seemed to really know.
Oh, there's a long history on that, on that property.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, well, then that's kind of part of it is where we have, you know, it's, it's family and we hate to see it just kind of go to nothing. And where there's still something there, like structurally that absolutely needs some money to really bring it, before I would feel comfortable bringing a whole bunch of people in it. You know, it's not a very big building anyways, as you all know. But to bring any people in and out of it for it to be safe. But yeah, it would be nice to see it, you know. Stay in.
The only other thing for you all to look at is that intersection's going to change next year.
Okay.
South, South Street.
Yeah.
91, 236 is part of MDOT changing that intersection.
Do you know what the change looks like?
I, I've seen pictures, but I've seen nothing concrete yet.
Yeah.
So it's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Right, well, these, this
While you're talking to Joe, we don't know what that intersection is going to look like.
We do have tentative plans from MDOT as to what the intersection
Right.
should look like, but
I mean, because you know, from our point of view, one of the things we're thinking, there's a really good reason why it shouldn't, there shouldn't be something there. And an intersection, absolutely, I completely understand, understand that, you know, depending on what it looks like and all that. But if they can't, if anybody can't really give us a really good reason why we, you know, couldn't, it just kind of baffles me, I guess.
Start back again with Joe and
Okay. We can do that.
The belief is that it's non-conformal with respect to the code.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Alright, thanks. Have a good night, you guys.
Anybody else on public comment this evening? Okay, we'll move on to some energy report.
For the highway building update, the electrical was to be started today. And I did put some progress pictures on your table so that you could, you can see. Flooring also went down last week. And we've gone over on a couple of little line items on the budget, but overall we'll still, still more within budget and everything's going very well.
There was, excuse me for interrupting, but there was a point in time where when we were ordering the building, you know, as, as a you know, we were a manufacturer with, like, it seemed like every seven days there was a certain percentage increase. Is that kind of cool, love?
Yes, we, we have all that material and it climbed and it climbed and it climbed. And then actually, because we kind of had that postponement, it actually went back down just a touch. But then the concrete went up. So we had a couple of things come up and come down and, but overall, we're still doing good. Jay and I are watching, you know, the line like a hawk, so. Which is that budget, so yeah, we're doing good.
Thank you.
I have also filled out the ARAP grant application for the town to receive the first half of the allotment, which is about $350,000 that we'll be receiving shortly. There are very strict guidelines on how we can spend that money. It's communication, elderly housing, water and sewer infrastructure, additional pay for essential workers that we can go back pay to. I'm still working and learning on all the specifics on how we can spend the money. I did think that it would be nice if we could take a reasonable amount of money and look to see how we could give a little bit to our essential workers who did work throughout all the pandemic. And that would be a small drop in the bucket compared to, you know, all this money. I've already talked to Tom at the sewer. He's got a lot of big projects that he wants to do for CIP. There's no way we can spend all this money, so I thought, why not share the wealth with the water and sewer companies in town too? So those are the kind of avenues I'm looking in to make sure that it's all going to fit into the parameters of how we can spend this money. So let me know that that's more to come. I just, without the application at this point, so. The audit has been going well. Peter Hall was here for 40s in late September and the rest of it has been remote. He is still finishing up. We should have a rough draft of the audit within a few weeks. There's no findings or anything at this point, but he is still wrapping things up. He will be here to present to the council, first meeting in December is what's planned, potentially. So, and with all that, we do have some preliminary numbers for ending fiscal '21. That the revenue is $850,000 over budget, which is great. $445,000 of that comes from the additional revenue sharing and the change that everyone else had done. So that's a huge portion of what that extra money came from. And about $260,000 over budget in vehicle excise tax. Apparently, everybody bought a new car during the pandemic, so that definitely helped that line too. So that's the bulk of where the extra came from. And the expenses are under budget by about $380,000. 200 of that is 380,000. Under budget, 200 of that is in the highway due to the mild winter. We didn't really use a lot of expensive there. So that's other, and that's still preliminary. I think we have some year-end entries for me to post, but can't say anything about it yet. I don't foresee anything that would change those numbers much at all. We are actually still having quite a bit of issues with the HVAC system at the library. Both Jay and I have been talking with Karen to try and glean all the history about the building and the heating system that we can, knowing that Karen's leaving in a couple of weeks. And Jay has stepped up and actually started talking more so geothermal, who is the vendor trying to maintain the system now. And we basically want to talk to them about, is it worth putting money into this? The vendor, geothermal, said he's at a point now where he's putting his hands up. There's a looping issue, which is all happening in the ground with all the wells looping around and coming back into the building. And because they didn't install it and we don't, or we can't find today plans that show exactly what the looping system looks like in the ground, how it's made, so he can't go forward with maintaining flushing and know how to fix it if he doesn't know what's there. So Jay and I are working at College Civil Consultants. We're talking to the architects out of Connecticut. So we're really trying to gather all this information to make a knowledgeable decision. Do we wash our hands of this and buy a new boiler with the extra money we've set aside for the library and know that they're going to be warm this winter? Or do we try and find out and see what the answers of this are and reassess at that point when we have this extra information? So at this point, we're starting to do a little research, but the extra money we set aside last year for the library, I want to make sure we spend that wisely.
Seven years, we've thrown good money after bad, trying to fix that, that I've been on this council.
Yeah.
It's junk.
And, you know
It's time to move on.
Last, last winter, they weren't warm enough. The winters before, they're wearing hats and lawn jobs all day.
We spent a lot of money for a system and just bite the bullet, cap it and put a heating system in the library.
So the other avenue would be to I don't know if, which Richie is still active as a contractor or construction manager, but perhaps that would be another avenue to see who the mechanical contractor was at that time and see if they have any aspects.
I did see, find a book in John St. Pierre's office that has that Richie name. It looks like it's just more like info, basic general information about that kind of a system, not specific to what we have. Do you know, I forget if there's other people who actually installed the original?
They, they, I forget if they were working as either a general contractor or a construction manager. But either way, that, that's the, the lead, lead contractor.
I have seen that name.
Then, then that that, that lead hires subs to install
Yes.
electrical, mechanical, you know, all the other systems. You know, everything, everything. And so it all gets broken down. The other thing to check would be to go back in the files and check the payment applications that were submitted periodically through the construction.
Yeah.
And there'll be line items under that for various vendors who would supply the equipment, but then also the contractors that installed it. And that should be broken down by by category.
Yeah, it was broken down to a certain degree. I did find that in town manager's office, so. So we're just, we're trying to just gather every single little piece of information that we can find and provide it to that vendor at this point and collectively try and figure out what's the best.
Before we pull the trigger on anything, we should, it should be, it doesn't have to be extensive, but there definitely should be an alternative analysis to see where we are going ahead and
Definitely.
what, what the, what the best course is.
I wanted to know, we've been working on that for a little while. So that's a big one. 25 Tamrec update, I don't know if you guys have heard complaints about the
Sound Correspondence.
RV that's been, people have been currently living in. So it's at the point where Joe has been sending, sending them letters. We've talked to Phil Sossier about it. We did a final, Phil wrote up, drafted up a final letter today that we're going to send out again, certified. Unfortunately, there's over 80,000 cases in Springfield District Court sitting there waiting, not even being That's the point of the next un-messaging process. So I just want to give you a little update on that in case you guys have any complaints on that.
Yeah, we're pending a court date, okay.
We've taken it to the highest level. Hopefully though, abide by the letters written, to date they have not.
Well, you have to keep working.
On a much lighter note, Friday, October 29th, at the library from 3 to 5, we're going to have a little gathering for Karen, a little farewell retirement party for her. If you want to well, we'll all be there that Friday afternoon.
The 29th?
On the 29th, that Friday from 3 to 5. And to the public, trick or treat is still happening, the April 4 Halloween. It's a go and the Halloween parade, we are trying to organize, but people who are running it in the past are no longer doing it. He got in, is still willing to buy all the candy, but we volunteers to put together the packages for the kids and to pass it out. And if you're interested in that, please reach out.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, Home for the Holidays tree. If you had something to do with that, Rich, I am.
I am, I'm the lady head of Home for the Holidays. We are just waiting to see if we can do this. We, same request, the one that I gave you, a meeting that I presented at that beginning. Just looking to put a tree with the tree stand that Jeff Minahan has made. We've got a timer. We're just looking to put it. Jeff, if I have correct, the location is on the front lawn of Town Hall, left side, central walkway centered between the two small maple, centered between the memorial and small maple. Those are just the possibilities that I have here, Excel.
Yeah, that, that's sort of where I was thinking. Everybody, sort of on the side of the lawn that's closer to the driveway going into the town hall and kind of finding a, a sweet spot in there that's kind of center it on that lawn. So it's not too close to the road, not too close to the driveway and also a decent distance from that memorial. I went up there and sort of measured out just preliminarily and figured if I, if we had the trunk of the tree sort of in the center of the grass area, it would probably be about 15, 20 feet from anything, either the memorial, the sidewalk, the road or the benches all the way around. Seemed like it'd be a good fit for placement. Tomorrow, I'm, I'm going and actually scoping out some, some of trees to get some good measurements if you guys are are, are good with doing it in that place.
Speaking with Cole earlier with Joe, he did suggest in the past Speaking with, uh, Code earlier with Joe, um, he did suggest, uh, in the past that. Maple on this side, Jen?
Closer to the end, I believe.
Yeah, closer to the end. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to refer you to one of the bus mysteries, but are you still willing to help us light that tree if you, if we are able to do this?
Yes, ma'am. Hundred percent.
We have the decision, I guess, Jeff, if we want to use Osgood still or. Do the actual tree that's in the ground, but upon approval, of course.
Yeah, it's a big tree.
It is a big tree.
That's, yeah, that's what concerns me, honestly, not to have the whole conversation about it here, but I mean, that, that's a big tree. Um, I, I have, uh, I have lights, um, but I don't know if I have enough lights to. To do a, a, a tree that belongs in a forest, uh, like that, so, uh, we'd have to do so a little bit more there. But whatever we want to do, I'm sure we can try and, try and get it lit.
Yeah, those lights still, where are those lights?
That light, since I've been on this council, that tree was lit.
They're not very expensive.
Well, the other, the, the thing that we, uh, Jeff has done too, because he's awesome and took pretty much charge of the tree still. Um, I'm just here presenting it on the behalf, he made a tree stand, am I correct? Or is it still in the process of being made for about a ten to fifteen foot tree that we're looking to place because we're possibly gonna do the ordinance too?
Right, I was, I was going to, I was gonna make it once I had, had, uh, the tree. But.
Have a local place donate the tree because we're looking at, we're working with Osguns over on.
Yeah.
So it was to support a local business as well.
When are we thinking about having the tree land?
We were looking at December first, um, but I wanna actually move to move that to the day of. Home for the Holidays, which is December third, because it's like the night, it's the tree lighting. Are you guys, Jeff and Jen, uh, Jeff and Jess, are you okay with that? Which is a nod? Okay, cool. I'm, I'm pulling my authority there. So December third. Um, through January ninth, which would have been thirty-eight days, meaning, uh, taking away. Does that give you time to decorate it?
No, so the third week of November, right after Thanksgiving, you want to have a tree on the property here.
Okay.
Cause you want to have a chance for it to settle on the ground. Make sure the ground's not gonna shift under the tree, make sure the box doesn't move, to make sure we have time to do it. You want to do right after Thanksgiving. You want to give it at least a week, week and a half before the third.
That sounds good to me.
I'm good whenever.
So this is just a Christmas tree, it's not a permanent tree?
No, just a Christmas tree in a box.
Yeah.
When the season, when it's over, they take the box out and they replant the tree.
Are you guys gonna water it? I mean, are we cutting the tree?
Um, I didn't really put any thought into that, I mean.
Could be the root ball. I don't, it doesn't matter.
We're not sure yet. It's either gonna be a cut tree or a root ball, but it's going to be a removable tree either way.
Okay, right.
Yeah. Um, as long as it's out of the way, um, I don't have any problems with, um. The last thing that the veterans should be doing will be Veterans Day, day of probably November eleventh. So, that ceremony that'll be, that I know that'll be held out there.
Getting a tree will be after that, so.
Yeah, better go.
Thank you.
So, uh, we have unanimous consent on the council that we're okay with the. Proceeding with the home for the holidays, uh, Christmas tree.
Yes.
A holiday tree, excuse me.
We gotta be, we gotta be diverse. It's the holiday tree, the tree lighting tree, how about?
Light the night tree.
I'm decorating a Christmas tree. I don't care what you all call it. I'm decorating a Christmas tree, yeah. I'll wear my Santa suit.
Well, thank you, and, um, John, I will tie in, we'll just coordinate with you for, for your assistance, so that would be great.
As soon, as soon as we get closer, we'll, I'll come to a meeting or whatever and we can sit down and figure out the logistics of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, uh, anything else on, uh, the, the holidays tree? Okay, uh, medical marijuana caregiver licensing, any members of the public want to chime in on that topic? Okay, uh, we had a, a, a good meeting. Workshop with the planning board, the town attorney, a whole bunch of. Interesting details with respect to, you know, how we're defining things and how, uh, what the municipal authority. Could be, uh, with respect, respect to regulations and, uh. And still recognizing the, uh, precious caregivers' rights of. Not prohibiting or limiting precious caregivers. But there are some things we can do and, uh, it seemed to the, to me, the conclusion was to continue to pursue. Looking at towns like, like Wyndham and Turner to have auditors on the books. And, uh, leaning, uh, appropriate, uh. Uh, terms and conditions from, from those ordinances. I, I really feel that there's a, before sending off the planning board, that we should send them something. You know, rather than saying, come up with something. I think that, that, uh, the council should. Should try to, um, put together a draft, uh, to. At, at least as a starting point, uh, that would help focus the task and. It's, uh, productive moving ahead.
What would be needed in addition to the draft that I already made? It's in a draft that I had written, I believe about a month ago, and had directed down to create this.
Well, that was a charge.
That was a charge.
A draft ordinance.
Correct. You want us to draft an ordinance to send to them?
Okay, and, and it might, it, it, we might have to just, uh, caucus and.
Yeah.
Take, then it turner and then say, okay, what do we? And what piece of advice we want to do, and then wordsmith that and send it off as a draft.
Okay.
Uh, that, that seems to make the most sense, uh, because it's, uh. It, it also frames whatever words that would, that we would approve as a charge.
Okay. Do we want to set a workshop for when, or a date, or a timeline for when this draft should be estimated done?
Well, seeing that I brought it up, I, I'm willing to. To draft something, uh, in, in my spare time. And, uh, and then I'd be willing to share it with you folks and then see what it's.
Okay.
So we have to say, and hopefully it'll be by, by the next meeting.
Okay, good.
And, uh. Keep going that way.
All right.
Yeah. What do you think about that, John?
I'm all right with that.
Could I say something, please?
Sure, Barbara. Barbara Hopkins, uh, Juan's Lane.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't fast enough, Jack. I'm looking for the hand. I'm looking for the hand to put up. Um, I, I was just, you know, I've been involved with this quite a bit and, um, you know, for people to be responsible with marijuana is just fine. Um, but we had some, a situation here in our own neighborhood. And I was just wondering if it would be a good opportunity to bring in some public comment. Um, for people who are using and, um, you know, selling and whatever that. You know, they should not be affecting the quality of life of their neighbors. And I thought maybe it would be an opportunity to ask people, what are some of the things that are concerning? Like I know of a situation down on Liberty where the growers are so close to the border. That the neighbor smelt marijuana all summer long. And, um, and so we have small lots, uh, the lawyer did mention possibility of setbacks. And I think that those kinds of suggestions, you know, maybe there are some other things that people would come up with, but it's an opportunity to bring in public comment. So, um, you know, not that they're gonna make the decisions, but what are some of the things that, you know, have, um, caused some anguish? Okay, already. So that's my comment. Thank you.
I would welcome the public then on that, on that, along those lines, Barbara. We've heard so far, um, numerous examples of people having concern with business hours of operation. Of canopy size, of smell, and those are what I originally drafted in the, in the draft, draft form of the planning board charge. That we're, we're not gonna do anything with at this point, because Jack is now gonna write a draft ordinance language for them. But anything in addition to those things, um. It now could be a good time to share that, or if you could be in touch with Jack and the council with ideas. But that's just what I've gleaned from, from months of listening.
So we. Uh, I, I just know, like, for ex, the one person, um, they, they are trying to have, uh. If you will, a convening discussion with their neighbors for next growing season. That the experiment was not so good on my end. So, you know, I know people are. Um, I, you know, I go back to Robert Frost and good fences make good neighbors, um, and it's hard when you're the neighbor. And you're gonna live with this person next to you to confront them about things. And they don't want to necessarily speak up, but that's where I thought, you know, some kind of a, I don't know. A survey or just encouraging people to send some comments in about any, anything else that we've not thought of. You know, the lights, I know lighting is another one, uh, dogs barking, you know, these are different things that we've heard, so. Um, but that can happen in any neighborhood. But anyway, I just thought it would be an opportunity to ask the public for that because you're working on the ordinance. Thank you.
A limitation on what the comment might be from the public. I mean, it's, it's an open book at this time. It's not a closed book, so. You have ideas, send them along?
With the understanding that there are things we cannot regulate. If I wanted to grow it next to Abby's house, I could grow five hundred feet. I'm not a business. I'm not selling it. It's tough for Abby, so we just have to make sure that we're discussing apples to apples when we're discussing this. When we're getting the comments. I just want to make sure we're getting comments that are stuff we can actually govern. Not the stuff outside of our purview. I don't, I don't want to get dragged down into stuff we can't look at, I guess, is what I'm going at.
So send us feedbacks and those ideas.
Yeah.
So that, that's how we'll proceed on this, I guess. That's, that's makes the most sense and. Okay, uh, action on. New business, number one, action on G A general assistance ordinance appendices. Is that the first, uh? Vitamin, uh. We have, uh. Two thousand twenty-one general assistance maximum, maximums. Reference sheet for York County H M F A and, uh. As the first item supporting documents. So that, that's the, the text we need to, uh, consider.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the general assistance maximums reference sheet for York County H M F A. For October first, twenty twenty-one through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as written.
Second. Thank you. Uh, any discussion on the, uh, proposed, uh, maximums? Okay, all those who gave say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes three zero. Uh, council member comments? John?
None this evening, sir.
I attended a, a nice, uh, reception, uh, invited Jennifer was there as well. Uh, we, we're introduced to the new CEO of York Hospital. Doctor Patrick Taylor. Nice gentleman, and, uh, we spent some time with, uh, other municipal officials, uh, over at Look and. And, uh, it was a nice time. It was nice to meet, uh, meet Dr. Taylor and was put on by Ann, I see who. Been working on all kinds of things for many, many years and she's taken us on as a advocate, advocate for the hospital. And it was a very, very nice time. Nice to meet him. Wish him good luck. Uh, that's all, yeah.
All right, um, Pat Robertson wanted us to mention, they are seeking volunteers and suppliers this year. For the, um, keep South Berwick Warm. The soup event is gonna be takeout, but they need volunteers and people to cook. Some tasty things up, so contact Pat Robertson if you're interested. Um, and then October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and. This year, I just wanted to do a special thanks to, uh, our police officers and our first responders for the work that they do. A lot of this work is unseen, um, but it's vital and I know that members of this community are really being taken care of. Um, by the excellent people we have working, working here, so just wanted to recognize them.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is to go into executive session and, uh. Move a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to go into executive session. Uh, it's M S, uh, M R S A. One M S R A, section four oh five dot six A dash personnel.
Second.
Okay, um, just as a note for anybody tuning in, this will be the last item on the agenda and, uh, the non-public session. And there'll be no other, uh, items discussed when we come out of executive session other than adjournment. So thank you all for, uh, for tuning in tonight. All those who gave say aye.
Aye, aye.
The motion passes three zero.